I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order. This is number 3,066. It is January 13th, 2014. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Boss?
Here.
She's really here.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. Happy New Year. It's good to get everything back to normal. The kids are back in school and things are settling down. And if you're like me, you have an extra three to five pounds to lose after all that. So, looking forward to a great new year. At this time, we need to do the approval of the minutes. This is Exhibit 1. Do I have a motion for the one on December 9th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes from December 16th, Exhibit 2.
So moved.
Motion by Boss.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this point, is the time in the evening when we would have public commentary? Is anyone here wishing to address the board? Excellent, okay. Go ahead and just state your name for the clerk.
My name is Joe Schwan, S.E.H.W.A.N. I live at 28630 Champions Court, Mundaline, Illinois 60060. Good evening, everybody, and a happy new year also. I would like to find out more about the grocery store situation. Since Dominick's has departed town, I get my hair cut at Great Clips, which was right next door to Dominick's. And a week ago, Friday, I was there getting my hair cut and asked a question there all the time because they seem to have some part of some story. And it's better than reading the newspaper. And they told me, number one, that Kroger wanted the store, but the village wouldn't give them a liquor license. That made no sense. But those are the kind of stories that are out there. And I disputed that. I said, "I was at a meeting and I heard them talking about trying to attract people. I doubt if they would, especially Kroger, give them a problem about a liquor license." And then I asked them, "Well, what else do you hear?" They said, "Well, we hear other people are looking at it." So I would like to ask the question, is the village got somebody that they've been talking to or trying to attract for that empty space? Let's not make it a church. And I'm not against churches.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, good evening.
We can tell you that the rumor mill is flying very well.
Yep.
That your lady that cuts your hair is not correct. We did not deny a liquor license to Kroger. As a matter of fact, we called Kroger, but I think we've contacted countless grocers. And so we're actively working to do two things. Attract another grocer to that location. And number two, working double time to dispel all the rumors. And the village has made it very clear that we've been in touch with the owner of the property, Brixmore. They're a national firm. I believe they're publicly traded. And they are the owners of the shopping center. And so we're in communication with Brixmore, trying to help them as much as we can. And we've been in touch, like I said, with a number of grocers trying to attract. But part of the problem that we're up against is Dominick's had a lease that doesn't expire until 2016. And so that doesn't mean that we're giving up on it. It just means that it's a little bit tougher to find somebody to come in and assume that lease or renegotiate a lease with Brixmore. The village has been very clear about the fact that we would be interested in offering incentive package for the right grocer. We've let that be known publicly. And I guess we're doing that again tonight. And we're doing everything we can to make sure that we don't leave any stone unturned.
Great, because it really is needed on this side of town. And last but not least, I'd like to commend the village on the snow plowing. Not living in the village, but I do go through it quite often. And a week ago Saturday and Friday, when all that snow came, your roads were pretty good. So I'd like to commend you on that. I thought the village plows did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public commentary? Okay. Then we'll close the floor and go to presentations and award. No presentations and awards for tonight or public hearings. That takes us to the mayor's report. And the first two items regard the evening of February 10th. And we're going to kick that off at 6:00 with the Committee of the Whole Meeting Regarding Medical Marijuana Dispensaries. And while we're on the topic of that evening, right around quarter to 7:00, we'll address the -- well, we're going to have a Community and Economic Development Committee meeting right into that, just one meeting into the next. And that's going to regard something going on on 45 Mundaline Bank. We're going to address the sign variation that they need. And that's right just north of McDonald's, that big lot there going in. So that's two meeting calls in that regard. This takes us to Item C, Furniture Planning and Procuring Professional Services Proposal. This is Exhibit 3. And we need a motion to authorize the village administrator to sign the professional services agreement with White and Company in the amount not to exceed $16,400.
So moved.
Motion by Semple. Second by Sullivan. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Sullivan.
In having White and Company represent us in furnishing the building, or our space in the building, are they also going to represent Weston?
That's something that we're going to talk to them about. We're not sure what their needs are. But just as we cooperated with Weston and our data and security systems, we're certainly get more buying power out of, say, the procurement of cubicles and things of common that we both will be using.
Well, it seems like we need to have someone out there shopping for us. Are we fairly certain that, well, I know that they're going to talk to us about what we want, they're going to come in and look at the furnishings that we have now and then we're going to decide which of those we're going to continue to use. Are we fairly certain that White will really save us money as opposed to us going out and try and do this on our own?
Well, I would answer that question in this way. That they will save us money because, for two reasons. Number one, we simply just don't have the capacity to do this on our own. Number two, we just don't have the expertise to do it on our own. So we would be out there spinning our wheels quite a bit, trying to figure out how to go about procurement of this. You know, there's a lot to think through. One of the reasons that we reached out to White is, you know, they, obviously, the architects on the building, they did all the interior design. They have a base knowledge of what the building entails and what we're trying to accomplish. And so we really need, when you get down to it, you think purchasing a chair is relatively easy, but you'd be surprised at how involved that would get. And so they would walk us through, for example, boardroom chairs, the seating, the audience chairs, the employee chairs, the conference room chairs, all of these different types of chairs. They will be selecting ones that are within our price range, coordinating with the suppliers to bring them in and try them out. I give the example of, they're going to pick out, you know, let's say, a chair in this family, and then you're going to have a choice between these three. And then, depending on the application, we're going to, you know, go through that. So there's, it's pretty involved with the contracts that we're going to be entering into.
Okay. Well, then, I understand that they have a budget. I mean, we have a budget that we're relaying to them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And lastly, less concerned, they are an architectural firm, and evidently, this is something that they routinely do? That is, they are experienced in furnishing buildings?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, Jason Dwyer's here from White. Anybody could ask Jason to maybe just come up to the microphone and speak to that. But they do have the expertise in-house.
Good evening, everyone. Jason Dwyer from White. Many of you know me from the original design work. I know there's a couple of new faces here. But, yeah, we do furniture design and planning all the time. Part of our interiors group, we have people in our Chicago office and a group in our main office in Darien that are all involved in furniture selection, interior design selections and that. So the work we did so far was really kind of more conceptualizing the layouts for furniture based on the original design. But now it's kind of getting into the nitty gritty and fine tuning that and really kind of helping you through the process of getting multiple proposals from dealers and finding out what's going to be the best to really fit your ultimate needs and do it within the budget that you have. But that's part of a core business piece that we do every day for a lot of our clients.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, trustee Boss.
So this amount, $16,000, does not include bidding? Doesn't include surveying or inventory checks?
Yeah, we've taken inventory of recently, Mr. Boucher's in charge of the big move, as I call it, and the logistics surrounding that. And so just recently, we've made an inventory of everything that's going to come over. A lot of what's coming over is, you know, file cabinets, for the most part. We don't have, there's some furniture, for example, I think the mayor's conference table is coming over and getting reused. And quite frankly, there isn't a lot left. There's some desks that will come over, depending on budgets. Various things out. Files is mostly what's coming over.
So do we have a budget for the move? Do we have a budget for, um, any of the furniture? Do we have to set up an inventory or do we have to?
Right, yeah. Yeah, we've budgeted $400,000 in this fiscal year.
For purchase?
Yes. Yes. Installation, setup, dusting. We're going to make that. And one of the biggest expenses is going to be the boardroom, quite frankly. The construction of the dais. That's not something we're ongoing discussions about. Can we buy something off the shelf? Or do we have to fabricate it? Cabinet maker of sorts. So keep it in mind. I know it's the board's desire that that, if you divide the building into two pieces, everything on the left side, as I like to say, is public space. And we wanted to pay particular attention to the public space. That we have the right detail in those public spaces. So we are going to spend a little bit more money on that side of the building as opposed to the employee side. That is reflected in the design that we had for the interior space now. There is wood trim detail, for lack of a better word, on the public spaces. Vinyl baseboard and wrapped drywall corners and doors on the employee side that cost on the original design of the building. So we came up with this number, it's more than 24 months ago. So we hope that it's still valid. We've been carrying that number forward. We carried it forward in this current fiscal year of $400,000. Some of that money has already been spent on IT needs in this building.
So hold that board and be included in the board?
Yeah, yeah, you can be. We haven't, you know, we don't know what's out there yet. And so we've explored avenues from, you know, reaching out and having something designed specifically. We haven't looked at that option. All of those things, I think White's going to help us think through. What is available out there, off the shelf, if you will? And is that good enough? So, yeah, when we move through that, particularly on the public space, I know that we want to be sensitive to the chairs that we're using. There's conference rooms that will be used by the public going forward. What's the appropriate level of quality on those rooms? I can tell you from a cubicle standpoint, we're just looking at middle-of-the-road stuff. But keep in mind that once we install something, it's, we usually have it for the next 25 years. And so we want to pick something that is going to be durable, but, you know, not overly pricey. So there's a lot of decisions that are going to go into this. We're happy to have White on board to help us think through that. But if the board wants to be involved in the boardroom, certainly when we get to that point, we can show you where our options are.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Abernathy.
Yes. I have a question. And I understand that, that's great, that Wright has been working with this and we're the architects. But for some things, did we look to any Mundaline businesses to maybe help us do this?
We never looked at a local architectural firm to help us.
What about a Mundaline interior design firm?
No, we didn't look there. And part of the reason is because we have a professional relationship with White. And the base knowledge that White brings to the table, just in our minds, outweighed kind of changing horses midstream. Because you would, I think, spend a lot of time.
Showing someone the design of the?
I'm not sure that it's just a matter of showing somebody the design. It's somebody that's been involved in the design from the very beginning on what we're trying to do. So we never looked at another firm.
I would hope in the future, when we're doing purchasing of furniture, that we are looking at our Mundaline businesses first.
Yeah, well, certainly.
I mean, if we need things fabricated, we have people to fabricate things in Mundaline.
Right, yeah.
That's where we have, I'm sorry, but I feel very strongly about that.
Yeah, there is, you know, there's two things we want to be sensitive to. And that is how we spend taxpayers' dollars.
Right.
So you can have a local firm that is more expensive. So we're sensitive to that. Number two, there are already installers, a major installer, in the Village Limits. And so we're well aware of that. And I think they install, you purchase a lot of this from dealers, and dealers use different installers. And so we're going to be sure that we take a hard look at the local businesses and make sure if we can give them the business and it's within what we think is acceptable price, we're going to use it. The same with when it comes to, if we do decide to fabricate the dais, there are a number of companies in town that can do that work. So we're aware of those.
Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those lines, I was wondering if this had ever gone to bid in the past and White had done work for us previously? As like a chosen vendor? So we continue it?
No, they were a selected architectural firm for the building and the interior design work that's been done.
Okay. If we so chose to, we could have sent it out to bid?
Yes. Just to kind of reiterate, the reason that we chose not to go out to bid, number one, we're not legally obligated to because they're professional services. But number two, because we have a relationship with White on this project, we thought it would be best to stay with them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
No.
Kim?
No.
Boss?
No.
Mayor votes yes. All right. So the motion carries. All right, that takes us to Item D. This is, I need a motion to adopt a resolution to request approval of legislation by the Illinois General Assembly authorizing the Village of Mundaline Lake County, Illinois, to acquire fee simple titles and/or temporary easements regarding certain parcels of real property needed for the Holly Street improvements. This is Exhibit 4.
So moved.
Motion by Kim. Second by Sullivan. Discussion?
Yes, please.
Trustee Boss.
If you can give me a second, because I have to get to that part. It seems like, and I apologize, waiting for the [inaudible]. That there might be.
We have people being paid by the hour here, trustee boss.
I apologize with you. There's a part, when I was reading this earlier, that seemed to imply, and I'm looking for the exact line, that we were going to allow on-street parking as part of this. And that seems to not be the case. So I just want to make sure that our verbiage is correct. And also? Yes. So I'm at the second whereas.
Page 1.
Yes. Which would be beneficial safety if certain improvements were made to Holly Street, including the reconstruction thereof and adding of traffic signals and more on-street parking spaces. Which we are not actually adding on-street parking spaces in design. We're taking them away. So I'm wondering if this verbiage needs to be changed.
Yes, I believe it does. That's probably a relic from the original design, which was the 12 additional spaces.
We have no.
No, that's actually being eliminated as well on California and being brought into the interior of the school district lot there.
So do the two trustees that made this motion need to amend their motion to exclude this? Okay, then I would make the motion to delete "more on-street parking spaces" phrase. It's in the second paragraph on the first page.
You get a second then?
Second.
Second by Abernathy? And then the original motion's second remain. Oh, we need a motion to, right? We need to vote on the amendment. Okay, so let's vote on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment?
Please tell me where it is and what. Second, on the second declaration? You want to delete that phrase?
Yes, because we're not putting any on-street parking in.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, clerk, would you please call the roll for the amendment?
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Okay, so that was my first question. The second thing is, in this motion, it suggests how many homes we have homeowners we've come to terms with. And I'm wondering if there has been any change to that number. And I'm wondering if, for the record, we can state how many of these homes are, as we say, in foreclosure or some bank activity? How many have no owner due to some death or probate issue?
We could do that, but it'd be only as good as the second we wrote it. That's the struggle we have with trying to memorialize that type of information is because that home could go into foreclosure tomorrow.
Okay, so do we have a picture that we could paint for right now?
You, I can provide you with that update. I don't have that information in front of me tonight. But we have that information that we update on a daily basis when necessary. We haven't needed to update it in several weeks now. But I can give you that notification that we've been providing in the past.
Okay, that would be very helpful. That's all.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Kim? Yes to the amended?
No.
No. This is the motion D, right?
This is the?
That you made.
Motion D. Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Kim, Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Before I wrap up my report, I just kind of feel I should come back and just revisit the furniture thing to the board. It was a split vote. I broke the tie. But I want you guys to know that I hear you. And I want to just remind you of a couple things going into this. First, when we took bids to build the Village Hall, we were very, very careful to go out and get as many bids from local businesses that we could. And I know that Weston and, we were talking to them, they were writing, the Mundaline businesses, "Look, please get your bids in." We were all over them. Those that could get a bid in, that did that kind of work, were implored to please put a bid in. And we were responsible about choosing the ones in the town that had the lowest bid. And we really, some of them got it, some of them didn't. But I'm convinced, we were very diligent. Weston was very diligent about esteeming that value, that we do value local businesses. Now, I would also remind the board that when it comes to professional services in the area of bidding, and this has come up with, you know, street engineering before and, you know, legal firms, accounting firms, these are much more relationally based, okay? You don't go to bid on every one of those. It's much more of a gray area. And we esteem the relationships that we have with companies that perform these professional services. It's in a different category. It's not like- It's not like, you know, getting concrete poured, okay? It's different. And so I want to just remind the board of that and tell you that moving forward with this, and I'll assure you guys that when we can, we will definitely look at local businesses to supply us with the furniture and the furnishings inside Village Hall. Absolutely. So, I hear you, but...
I just want to say, it'll be hard to get a professional relationship with some businesses if we don't use them.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood. Finally, I want to, before I sign off on my report, I want to come back and talk about Bob Shuan got up and spoke about...
Joe.
Joe Shuan, got up and spoke about the grocery store, and I've been, I went off on this last time, a month ago, and I just want to assure the village that, you know, this impacts me on a personal basis, and I will be, and staff can attest that I am diligent about asking about this. I live just a few blocks away from Dominix. My kids grew up with us taking trips to Dominix. You know, it's been a part of our family culture where we get food and take trips and, you know, on getting stuff. And it's, it hits, it hits home to me on a personal basis, and you can be assured that everything that we can do, everything I can do and what staff can do, will be done. And that, when what we're doing is constantly under review, because if we can do more, we're very interested. And so you can be assured of that, okay? All right, so that concludes my report. Let's go to trustee reports. Public Works, excuse me?
Good question.
Liquor Control?
All right. Good time, okay. All right, instead of going to trustee reports, what we're going to do is adjourn this meeting and go into a, we're going to recess into a liquor control commission meeting. And so, because we have an item on the agenda there. So I need a motion to recess into, is that how we phrase it?
Second.
Liquor Control Meeting. Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries. I need a motion to open the Liquor Control Commission Meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Kim, second by...
Meyer.
Meyer? Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries. We now convene the meeting, and clerk, would you please take attendance?
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan? Boss?
Here.
All right. So, attendance. First item on the agenda for the Liquor Control Commission Meeting is the approval of minutes from October 28, 2013. This is exhibit one in that particular packet. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Boss?
I didn't get a packet for this, so I will be abstaining from voting on these minutes because I have no way to verify them.
Trustee Boss will abstain?
Okay, here, thank you. Mike? No, this is...
Okay, any discussion, no? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. This takes us to the citation and notice of hearing. At this point, I will turn it over to Mr. LaLazare.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. We have one matter before the commission tonight. We have reached a tentative resolution, myself and the licensee and their attorney, subject to the commission's approval. This comes on before the commission this evening for a violation, actually two instances on the, of the date of December 7, 2013, in which employees of Jay's Liquor at 700 South Lake Street in Mundaline sold alcohol to minors. They were apprehended by several police officers that observed these individuals leaving the store, appeared to be underage, confronted them, and found out that they in fact had bought liquor in the store and had not been carded properly, and in fact were underage. Mr. Marcus is here on behalf of the...
Good evening.
Jay's Liquor and the president, Kwang Suk Yi. The proposed disposition that we have and are seeking the commission's approval is for the imposition of a $1,000 fine and the suspension of the licensee's liquor, Class B liquor license, LL13-04027, for two days, to be determined by the commission. The licensee is requesting the dates of January 24th and January 25th of 2014. By way of background, I'm sure the commission is familiar with this establishment. They were here back in December of 2013, actually 2012, on a violation. They were fined $500 at that time. They also appeared in February of 2013, which they entered into an agreement for a $1,000 fine with no suspension of the license. This would be their third violation within just a little over a year. And we think that the two-day suspension is appropriate. And so I have prepared an agreed order subject to the commission's approval. I know typically the commission would like to hear from either Mr. Marcus and/or the license holder regarding this incident and measures they've taken in response to this incident, so I would turn it over to Mr. Marcus at this time.
Good evening. My client is here, the president, Kwang Suk Yi, is present. She's in the back at this point in time, and I've discussed this incident with her. It's a situation where the employee did not check the, there were two minors, they came into the store together, so it was, well, technically it was one incident, they were both there together, so it wasn't two separate occasions. And apparently, the clerk thought that he had, or knew these individuals when he in fact did not, and did sell them liquor, and we're freely and voluntarily admitting the wrongdoing of the clerk. The clerk has been fired as a result of this incident and is no longer employed by Jay's Liquor. They're in the process of training a new clerk so that this doesn't obviously repeat itself. The other incident involved her son, and he also was fired. This was an earlier incident, I believe in 2012 that this occurred. Mrs. Yi actually fired her son because of a similar situation. She's in the process of training a clerk at this point in time to replace the one that was recently discharged. It was an unfortunate incident, she certainly had nothing to do with this and did not participate in this, but the employee took it upon himself to in fact sell the liquor to these two individual individuals without checking the license. She is very mindful of the situation here, it is grave, she is very remorseful for what in fact has occurred. She intends on making sure that the current employee that's in training is fully trained in this situation and is aware of the circumstances behind these two instances. And we believe it will not be repeated. Now, obviously, two-day suspension is a serious one. As Mr. LaLazare has mentioned, the punishments have gotten greater and greater over the period of time. She has not been suspended previously. We echo Mr. LaLazare in terms of feeling that this is an appropriate disposition for what in fact has happened at this point in time. And again, indeed, she's taken corrective action by discharging the clerk. Does anybody have any questions of me or Ms. Yi, who is present also?
Trustee Boss?
Does she work there, the owner?
From time, Ms. Yi, do you want to step up, please?
Yes, I work here.
How many hours do you work there?
Approximately. About forty hours, approximately forty hours.
And how many employees do you have besides yourself?
Only you.
One employee other than herself. And unfortunately, these incidences have occurred when she has not been in the store. These incidents have not involved her, but other employees. And again, she in fact discharged her own son because he in fact engaged in misconduct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is this a time for commentary too, or is it only questions?
Not yet, no, we'll do commentary and, you know, expressions of our opinion in just a second, but let's get the questions out of the way if there's any others. Anything further? Oh, Mr. LaLazare?
If I may just address it, a response to trustee Boss's question, in reviewing the police report again here with Chief Cunter, it appears that on this last incident, she was present in the store, although maybe not at the counter, but she was present, the officers did talk to her the night of this incident. The other two times, I don't believe she was, but she was present in the store on the incident on December 7, 2013.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. I guess there's no questions at this point. So at this point, board, we can go around and each can give their opinion, or if any one trustee feels that we should go into executive session to be more expressive about maybe changing or, you know, contemplating the actual penalty itself, then we would do so.
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, then we need to have a vote to go into executive session. Motion, so I need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim, discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Okay.
What we'll do is the board will get up and go in the other room, you guys can stay here, okay? All right, we'll be right back, thank you.
How is she going to do that with?
All right, let's reconvene the Liquor Control Commission Meeting. I need a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Boss, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Very good, we are convened. Clerk, would you please take attendance?
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Boss?
Here.
Very good. At this point, I would like to ask Mr. LaLazare to explain the situation right now.
Thank you. While the commission was in the executive session, I spoke to counsel for the licensee, understanding the commission's concern about the gravity of this instance within the timeframe that the violations previously had occurred, and sensing the direction that the commission was looking at, we have modified our agreement, again, subject to the commission's approval, that there be seven consecutive days of a suspension of their liquor license in addition to the $1,000 fine, to commence on January 23 of 2014 to January 30, 2014. And counsel and his client are initiating the changes on the order, and if that's acceptable to the commission, we would ask for affirmative vote on that.
Okay, so at this point, we need a motion to accept the agreed-upon penalty disposition.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Boss?
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion?
Um...
Okay, trustee Boss?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to point out that the $1,000 fine is the maximum that we can assess, in case anyone's interested. And also, I would like to, I feel a little repetitious in doing this, but I would like to warn the owner that our patience is being tried by having these repeat problems in this establishment, and that you were warned the last time that you came, that if we saw you again, that it would result in a suspension. So now you're getting the suspension, and I would warn you that the next step that we have at our disposal is a revocation. So I would remind you that you were being warned again, that I don't, either you need to do a better job of hiring staff, or you yourself need to spend more time there, that's your call as a business owner. We, as the village board, are here to tell you that we will not tolerate our businesses selling alcohol to underage drinkers. And you've had too many violations in too short of a time, we can't tolerate it.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I can approach, I will give the amended order to you to sign.
Before we adjourn, I would just like to echo trustee Boss's comments and just make sure that, you know, we're really rooting for you to change, okay? And for years and years to go by before we ever hear about this again. And the purpose of this position like this is to really arrest the attention of a business that does something like this. And we want you to stay in business, we want you to be there, but we can't do this again anytime soon at all. Okay? And I hope that that message gets clear, and good luck to you. At this point, I need a motion to adjourn the Liquor Control Commission Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Okay, now we need a motion to reconvene the village board meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Meyer, oh, wait a minute. Referee's timeout.
Sorry.
All right, now we need a motion to reconvene the village board meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Sullivan, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
All right, we are reconvened, and this takes us to trustee reports. Public Works Committee trustee Meyer. Oh, attendance, you're right, sorry about that. Need a little matrix, I need a play sheet, an offensive play sheet, all right. Clerk, please take attendance.
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
All right, we're all here. Now we're convened, and this takes us to trustee reports. Public Works Committee trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one motion for tonight, and that would be to make a motion to authorize staff to solicit proposals for the electrical rehabilitation of well number eight, and the information can be found in exhibit PW-1. So make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Abernathy, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher, anything you wanted to comment on snow removal, or cold, or anything?
No, I think Mr. Elevato had forwarded along a report that we had prepared for the board, just to kind of recap the last two weeks of work we've done. There was some additional things we'd done that hadn't been included in there, that ancillary to the actual snow, as part of the reaction to the cold, a lot of the service lines in town had suffered some leaking, and our water division crews had responded to 38 of those service leaks throughout town, which provide residents with assistance on their private lines in terms of trying to pinpoint the location of the leaks. We don't actually repair the leaks, but we will try to assist them and help them learn how to handle those. And there was about 38 of those over the last two weeks, so we've been pretty busy.
Have we had any water main breaks?
During that two-week span, we just had a service break that pulled us away from doing the snow and ice control over the weekend, but really to this point, none, but now, now you did it, now you jinxed us.
Sorry.
Yeah. Anyway, I'd like to thank you and your crew for all the hard work and everything that was done over that time period. I know it was very difficult, and a lot of hours were worked.
Thank you.
That would be all I have for my report.
Okay, one little bit of trivia, and let me see if I get this right, is that one seven-day period of time was the seventh-largest snowfall volume during a seven-day period in recorded Mondeleine weather history?
In recorded Chicagoland history, it was based on reports from O'Hare. So Chicagoland area, that was the seventh-largest snow event over seven, over any seven-day period in recorded history.
Wow.
A lot of snow.
It was 23.1.
Yes.
Well, I think considering, I think we did a great job, thank you, congratulations, I mean, it was, I drove around in the middle of that just to see where things were at, and 90 miles of roads, something like that in Mondeleine, with X number of snowplows, X number of personnel going all those hours, I think you guys did well. All right.
Well, yeah, just one other note, I had heard from a previous resident that no longer lives here that wished they did because the condition of our roads were much better than where that resident currently lives now, so kudos to, in comparison to other areas.
Finance Committee trustee Sullivan.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, this evening, we have a motion, we've taken it off of our bill list because I believe one trustee will abstain, that motion to approve the payment of bills to AT&amp;T totaling $11,135.45, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Meyer, Abernathy. Discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
This evening, on the omnibus list of motions, there is one to pay a bill list totaling $3,680,610.67. Some of the main ingredients of that bill are the following, to Campanella Construction for our street program this past year, two bills, one for $183,377, a second for $217,231. Our regular bill from, for Lake Michigan Water to the Central Lake County Water Agency, $177,717. We have our annual payment to the Inter, Irma, our insurance company, for $672,796. And last, but obviously not least, a bill to Weston Solutions for construction of the new village hall, this totaling $1,482,558. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan, next, Public Safety Committee trustee Semple.
No reports, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to ask first Chief Sashko, if he has anything he'd like to communicate to the board and the public.
Just a couple of recaps, we had a very successful blood drive on January 4th in some really crummy weather, 78 units that were donated, and Salvation Army did fairly well that day also with their clothing and household goods drive. For our sixth consecutive year, we had keep the wreath red, and it stayed red, which is that period between January, or December 1st and January 1st, where hopefully no holiday-related fires occur, and we have not. So six consecutive years is pretty good for a community, I'm very proud of everybody with their safety efforts during that period of time. And really a shout-out on the heels of Director Boucher's comments about snow removal, the CERT team did just an outstanding job along with our staff with keeping hydrants clean. And I don't know if you saw the Daily Herald, but Wheeling had a pretty large fire, and the first thing they did when they pulled up on the scene is shovel out hydrants, so we had some outstanding, outstanding commitment from the CERT team, and our personnel out for three days just clearing those, it's pretty difficult during that period of time. On top of the fact that they had also stood up a program, we had met the Sunday when things were getting pretty clear with the severe temperatures, activating our sheltering plan, and within about three hours on Sunday afternoon, we were able to staff, if we needed it, we didn't need it, shelter and warming centers for almost a 48-hour complete, and that was 24/7 they were going to be here, so it's just an outstanding effort on the part of their volunteerism within the community. So it was important in the background to, at least for the board to hear about that.
Thank you, Chief, Chief Gunther for police.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all.
Okay, let's see here. All right, let's go back here, where are we now, Public Safety, all right. Thank you trustee Semple, next, Community and Economic Development Committee trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, tonight, I have several motions for businesses that have gone before planning and zoning. The first one is M&amp;A Prestige Line of Mondeleine Inc. as seen as exhibit CEDC-1 in your packet. The first motion which I'll make is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is, this is for, just to go back for a minute, this is for an existing business that already had been doing business and is just switching to a different part of the building. So we, the next motion is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commissioner's recommendations.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the third is a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a conditional use variation to M&amp;A Prestige Line of Mondeleine at 888 Tower Road, units H and I with conditions. And I'd like to make that motion and then ask if the petitioner is here.
All right, motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Kim, okay, so during discussion, we're asking the petitioner to come up, could you state your name for the clerk?
My name is Ross, I'm the owner of M&amp;A Prestige Line, I'm from Vernon Hills, and I'm owner business in Mondeleine already second year, and like everybody say, I'm, I'm a dealer, and I am a driver, and I thank you, sir, who plowed the roads. Customer came over and, believe it or not, they called and say, guys, it's easy to find you, it's clean. And believe it or not, I'm driving around the city, and it's, here it's clean. That was today, well, it was a lot of snow, cold, and everybody's happy, only if you be able to drive it, you need to go to a store and it's clean. So, thank you again, and believe it or not, it's not easy, but when customer call you, say, we made it, that person's a car and go home, in this weather, we love it, so it's, it's a very good thing, and thanks again. Like I said, I'm business owner in Mondeleine, the only thing like I'm trying to do is growing up. I have a couple Mondeleine residence workers, so everything else is just continue to slowly, slowly go up. Exactly, everything else is just trying to sell cars and give service to a local residence if they need it.
Okay, in the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some concern about a neighbor of yours in this building saying that you were using her parking places, but in actuality, it wasn't your business that was using them, that was another business. So I just want to make sure that we've, for the record, show that we've investigated that, that's not an issue. Does anybody else have any questions for the position?
I do, if I read this correctly, the, in the minutes from December 18th, A through K, there was a lot of.
There's a lot of recommendations.
Recommendations, a lot of conditions put on this, have these conditions been, currently are you following these conditions?
Absolutely, most of them, we discussed with the Director of Planning and the Fire Department, so everything where it's on the paperwork, we, we went through it and we work on it. So regarding everything else, like I say, we trying to grow up, so I'm more like, if something which you want to ask me, or you see not, I'm willing to answer.
So the discharge of the sanitary sewer has been addressed?
That's a different business.
It's not me.
You're looking at the car wash.
You're looking at the second item, we're on the first one.
I'm looking at M&amp;A Prestige Line.
Yes.
Yeah, this is all.
The business adheres to vehicle storage requirements of the Fire Department, the business adheres to the conditions listed in section.
Okay.
One, A through E of the original ordinance.
Sorry, my.
Those are the conditions.
These are all goofy.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. We're good.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, happy holidays, happy new year.
Thank you, clerk.
We have a, we have a motion, right?
Right, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan? Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have the next one, which is AERC Auto Repair, as seen as exhibit CEDC-2. And this is the next business that had all those requirements, but first, we're going to make, I'm going to make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan? Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next motion is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations, which are A through K, and I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss?
So moved.
Second by Kim, discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Mm-hmm.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, and the final thing is, and I'm going to, again, make this motion and then ask if the petitioner is here, is motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a use variation pursuant to section 20.40.020 to allow car washing and detailing at 1270 Townline Road, subject to conditions, again, A through K.
Motion by Voss, second by?
Second.
Meyer, discussion, okay?
Is there, is the petitioner here?
There we go, yeah, come on up, and if you could, just state your name to the clerk and.
My name is Jose Flores, I live in around Lake Park, 202 East Willow Drive, and I'm really, I'm trying to open auto repair in Mondeleine and handcar wash and detail.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Trustee Abernathy.
So, okay, now we're on the discharge sanitary sewer, did we have that addressed? Anyone?
Yes.
It has been taken care of?
We're working through that, but it will be, yes.
Okay. And it says there is no body repair yet, you said, so what, you're doing just mechanical repairs?
Mechanical repairs, no body repair.
No body work?
No.
Anyone else? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing is same property, to talk about changing parking requirements to something that's more suitable for this type of business. So I'll make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact. This is exhibit CEDC-3 in your packet.
Motion by Voss?
So moved.
Second by Kim, discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, motion, I'll make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Meyer, discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the final motion is to pass an ordinance granting a parking variation to section 20.56.140 to the zoning ordinance to allow a reduction in the number of required parking spaces at 1270 Townline Road, subject to conditions.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Meyer, discussion, all right.
Property owners present, do you have anything that you want to say to us?
Okay, any discussion or questions, okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries.
Thank you, okay, lastly, as always, I have a list of new businesses. We ask our Mondeleine residents to support our local businesses, to patronize them, to keep our tax dollars in town. So we have Susan Stewart, personal hairstylist at 526 North Seymour. Beauty and Motion Salon and Gifts at 628 East Holly, cutting both men and women's hair, sales merchandise such as perfumes, purses, jewelry and clothing. Self Trading at 400 Townline Road, which is actually located in Garden Fresh, they're selling vitamins and cosmetics. Fitness Fiesta at 718 South Lake Street, Zumba Fitness Training. Hair NFX, which is actually an existing business in Mondeleine that is expanding and moving to 18 East Park Avenue, a full-service hair salon with barber. And D.E.E.'s Beauty Salon at 676 East Holly, a full-service hair salon. Let it be said by no one that they cannot get their hair appropriately cut and styled in Mondeleine. And that is all I have for us tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, trustee Voss, next up, Communication and Marketing Committee trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to touch on a few things, although nothing's on the agenda here. Just to remind everyone that we have completely done a remodel on our website. Yes, it's, it's all nice, neat, mobile-friendly, and to tie to that, the app has been launched for not only Android, but iPhone as well, so everyone should be able to not only call us at any hour of the day, but start a ticket for potholes or any permits that they need done, 24 hours a day. And, let's see, we've also had Dawn redo our newsletter as well, and I think people have noticed that. I've received a few comments on how good everything looks now. Dawn, Mrs. Janich, is there anything else you'd like me to mention during this time? Okay, she said that to continue on the branding campaign, in the next month, they're going to start doing the focus groups. Oh, they're going on right now, okay, oh. Oh, okay. So, the focus groups are going on right now. So, that's moving along. Anything else, Mr. Lebado? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Trustee Abernathy, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
I have nothing for this evening. However, I do want to reiterate, I'm with, Mr. Shaw was still here since he's the Director of the Superintendent for Streets, and he really did a fabulous job with the men out on the roads and keeping our streets clear. So, and Director Boucher, thank you also. It's all Craig. He did a great job, though. Between him and Mr. Schutz, they did a great job keeping every, all the streets clear. Do you have anything else, Mr. Boucher? Nope. Okay. We're good.
Okay. Taking us to other reports, does a trustee have any other topic or other report to present at this time? Okay. That takes us to the omnibus vote items. We have items A, B, C, D, and E. Five items, A through E. Does any trustee wish to pull one or more of these items?
Yes.
Trustee Boss?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like item B off.
Item B. Okay. Anyone else?
B as in...
B as in boy.
B as in Bravo. Right.
Yes.
Boy is trustee Boss, correct?
Yes. Item D. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So, now, we need a motion to pass items A, C, and E. And do I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Boss, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan? Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. That takes us to item B. Trustee Boss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I understand people are getting paid by the hour here, but I, I'm scrolling for this. I discussed this with Mr. Lebado prior to this. And I, I'm, this is regarding liquor license for Wingstop. And in the verbiage of the liquor license, we say that they have to offer patrons a full and complete meal, including a dinner menu, and that serving of beer and wine is incidental. We further then go on to say, "The full and complete meals, including a dinner menu, means food service provided by a licensee on the license premise, not less than five days each week between," and it goes on to the hours continuously. "Pizza, chop suey, and similar items, but not sandwiches and stack-type foods, shall be considered a full and complete meal." And I'm really concerned with that verbiage, "but not sandwiches and stack-type foods," that actually what we're saying is that what they're serving is not an actual meal because they are serving sandwiches and wings are snack-type food. And I'm just wondering if there's a reason that we have to have that sentence in because it seems like we're just setting them up for trouble.
Didn't this, this establishment had a liquor license before? Right.
But it's also possible it was several years ago that our license verbiage has changed or that this got inserted and wasn't inserted before. I'm not really clear on it. I, I just, we specify in this ordinance that sandwiches and stack-type foods, of which I think wings qualify, are not, cannot constitute a meal. We did. Is there, is there a reason that sandwiches and snack-type foods have to be in the ordinance? I think that this verbiage is very confusing. I think that, I don't have a problem with giving a liquor license to Wingstop. I want to make sure that we are on record as acknowledging what their menu is and that we are acknowledging that we do not, that we consider their meals that they list on their menu to be a complete meal and not a snack food that we exempt from the meal. I just want to make sure that we're not setting them up that some future board would say that's not a full and complete meal and revoke their liquor license or say that they're in violation. So, I want it to be perfectly clear on the record.
Are the owners here?
No.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I know this is outside of the Wingstop request, but at some point, could we look at that verbiage again? Because it is possible to have a sandwich just as a meal without being forced to have fries or any other compliment because in today's health-conscious areas, a lot of times, a sandwich is more than enough for a meal. Okay. I can live with that clarification as long as it's really clear because you can't have an appetizer as a meal or a sandwich as a meal. Okay. My question to you on this is, are we actually granting a liquor license to the Wingstop tonight? In that category? So, this won't come before the board again to create a license? And the people who want the license aren't here?
Yes.
Yeah, they've been here.
Yeah, I know they've been here, but we've had new information in the light of them being here that we didn't have when they came before us last time. Okay. I, I just would have liked to have addressed the people asking for the license.
Well, you know, you know, when that information came to light, you know, I guess we didn't hear it from enough trustees that you were concerned about it for it not to be on the omnibus.
I, I just got the, we just got this Friday. We, I mean, we just...
No, but before that...
I didn't know this before. It's, we got it January 6th.
Right. But our interview with them and subsequent communications to you, there weren't enough...
It was January 6th.
That's, yeah, January 6th. When was your interview with them?
Oh.
But that's what I'm saying is, we, I didn't, we didn't hear anything about your interview with them until we got this memo.
Right.
So, in order to, when did you, today is the 13th. We found out about it when we got our packets on Friday.
That it would be on the omnibus.
That it would be on the omnibus. So, we didn't really have time to tell you there was a little more importance than putting it on the omnibus. Correct?
No, I, I mean, you had three or four days. I don't know how what, how long you want to review the memo. And when it says, "If you have any questions or concerns, please contact the mayor or Mr. Lebado." And so, when we don't hear from anybody, or maybe one or two that said, "Okay," then...
I just would have, I thought they would have been here.
Two trustees says, said, "Okay, I got, I got it." Made a short comment.
Okay.
And nothing that would make us think, you know, we have to really either pull this or bring it front and center and talk about it. But, or have, or request that they be here. We had no input to that.
My, I, I had assumed that they would be wanting a liquor license, they would be here. They would be before us.
They made quite a presentation before, but, you know, I, yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you just the past practice of the board is that once the, the business owner gets past the letter of interest stage, in which they do appear and there's kind of an informal proceed to the liquor license application, then at that point, it's been our practice to then just put it on the omnibus. If there's something the board would like us to do differently, you know, we can not put them in the future, don't put them on the...
You know, in my tenure on the board, I don't actually remember times of getting these subsequent updates. Actually, I can only remember one other time and the petitioner did come before us again.
The only reason I brought this up, I'm sorry, the only reason I brought it up is they did come before us the first time. I remember them coming before us the first time. But we had gotten subsequent information since they were with us. So, that's why, we didn't have that information when they came to us before.
Right.
So, that's why I would think that they would want to show their...
Yeah, I guess because in our memo to you, we pretty much made, we, we revealed all the details and then made the recommendation that we move forward with this. And we solicited for your input. And then when we heard from two that said, "Okay, but, you know, let's, let's watch this." Clerk, carefully...
Okay, I really don't want to say this, but nowhere on here does it say to call you with concerns. Here's my memo.
No, there's nothing at the end.
Nothing at the end that says, "Call with concerns." So, or I would have. So, don't... Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
I'm just going to assume that trustee Abernathy and I got the same communication from Mr. Lebado some, at least a week ago.
Which, which?
Explaining the situation, the, the specific situations around these applicants.
No.
Asking...
That's what you just have?
Oh, this memo. Yeah.
And I replied, indicating my hopes of what staff had communicated and the mayor had communicated to them. I was assured that that was communicated. And so, that was all I needed to know. And it is the policy of the board for staff to take these applications forward after the initial interview with the applicant. So, I, I think that what's taking place is traditional. It's the way, it's the way we've always done it. But that doesn't mean that that's the way everybody wants it to go on in the future. I think the situation here is that the investigation that the police department carried through came up with some irregularities. And they were addressed by staff and by the mayor. My satisfaction, anyway.
Yes. Okay. Where does this begin? Where does it end?
I'll make a motion...
Can we just make a mo, we have a motion?
No, we haven't. I'll make a motion to pass an ordinance amending, amending ordinance number 04-12-69, an ordinance regulating the sale of alcoholic liquor in the Village of Mundeline.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
No.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Sullivan, item D.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize, I, I should have called to get some information on what the fire ground survival course is. And maybe the chief could tell me. I mean, 90% of this money has been received through a grant. And so, I don't have a concern about that. But I'm interested in what the course amounts to.
Well, annually, where this is coming from is there's an Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program through FEMA, which we, every year, we apply for some component of our operations through that. You can get everything from fire apparatus to EMS equipment to training, you name it. This is kind of a combined effort. It's a training program in coordination with the International Association of Firefighters. And we actually get props out of this. So, it's, it's, it's something that really will replace what we attempted to do on our own here through some two-by-fours and plywood and a few other things. And we're going to actually get the physical props that are a little bit more sturdy, a little bit safer to operate on, and teaching fire ground survival. This is entrapment, you know, programs and things like that where firefighters are found, a floor collapses. There's a variety of different things that we've actually duplicated. And so, this program has a training program and the props that come along with it.
Is the instruction provided here?
Yes.
Comes here?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to make that motion?
Want to make that motion?
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. That takes us to village staff reports. Village administrator, Mr. Lebado?
I just have two items. Last Friday, the department had submitted their budgets to me. So, the board will be seeing the unabridged budgets in each of their departments soon. And then, that's where the work begins, to make sure that we deliver to the board a balanced budget. That's number one. Number two, I just... two, I just wanna publicly acknowledge Dawn Genich and Carmen Pedraza, IT supervisor, for, I think what they did was just an outstanding job on the website. That's phase one, to get that launched. And phase two is kinda cleaning up some of the more intricate parts of that website, and addressing some other websites moving on. So we expect to do that in the coming months. And so you'll constantly see improvements, I think, on the website that was launched on December 30th. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Village attorney, Mr. Marino. Okay. And the village clerk.
I don't have any official report for the minutes, but I just wanna tell everybody, I'm gonna be a grandma in June.
Hey.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Moving on for the record.
Okay. All right. Well, before we adjourn, I just wanna thank the board and the trustees for, I mean, it's, it's been a decently long meeting, but I just wanna make an observation. I think everyone came well-prepared. Thank you for your diligence and attention to detail. There was some, it was obvious everyone was prepared and ready to go. So thank you, and let's drive safe tonight. So I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Voss, second by.
I will second that emotion.
Second by Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.